All right, good evening, everyone. This is the June 12, 2019, regulars Walla Walla City Council meeting. Thank you all for being here. For those of you who haven't been here before, and I think that's quite a few of you, this is the first council meeting we've had in our newly renovated chambers. So this is certainly a good housewarming.[24.18][24.18][applause] Nice to see every seat filled. We'll start off with the roll call, please, Ms. Hill.
Councilmember Bianna.
Present.
Councilmember Club.
Here.
Councilmember Cummins.
Here.
Councilmember Huey.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Skidner.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Thank you. We're now going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask you to stand up and join us. It will be led by Mr. Cummins, and we ask that you remain standing afterward for a moment of silence.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first items on tonight's agenda are presentations and proclamations. First is a presentation of the Anderson Perry Scholarship Award. And, Mr. Club, you're going to do that, I think.
Yes. Hey, I'm sort of new to this. Do we do this down here?
Why don't you?
Okay.
Take your mic.
Take my mic?
I don't know.
Okay, so Anderson Perry was $5,000, $750, a little less than $5,000.[164.62][164.62][laughter] Great. People, students from our valley who applied. We selected Lauren Roof, and I believe Lauren's father is here tonight.
And I believe the scholarship, if I'm correct, Mr. Club, was an STEM kind of student?
That's right. Yeah. According to Lauren's, she's wild about STEM, math and engineering. She plans to go on to... She is going to study engineering next fall at the University of Oregon. Excellent.[219.43][219.43][applause]
Your Honor, we also have Jake Hollowpeter here from Anderson Perry and Associates. A couple of words about the scholarship.
If I may, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, to the city for being such a, not only a good client, but a great community partner that really enables us to have this scholarship program where we try to give back to the clients, you know, in the area that we work. And I'm proud to say that, you know, to date, we've given out over $100,000 in scholarships to students like Lauren who are pursuing STEM-related fields. So thank you very much.[266.12][266.12][applause]
All right. The next item is Police Chief Scott Bieber is going to give us a presentation about the police department's accreditation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott Bieber, Police Chief, City of Walla Walla. It's my honor and privilege to be here tonight to share with you our newly received, as of May 22, accreditation through the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. We are one of only 38 cities in the state of Washington to achieve accreditation. We are one of 51 agencies total in the state of Washington. The accreditation process, although the plaque is rather small, it represents... It took about four years of work in our department to make sure that our policies and practices met the 138 standards of best practices in law enforcement before we were able to have an onsite team come and evaluate and approve us for accreditation. We have to re-accredit every... accredit every four years. We have to prove again that we are using those best standards throughout that four-year period. So it's... I'm very proud of the men and women of the police department who worked on this project, especially our records manager, Patty Blakely, Captain Kevin Berman, who was the accreditation manager, Bill Dunham, who is our property and evidence technician. Those three people in particular had a lot of heavy lifting to do to make it to accreditation. So we're extremely proud of the department tonight. Thank you.[387.22][387.22][applause]
Okay. Did I put on the council? Want to say anything? Well, on behalf of the council, then, I'll say that we're certainly proud of the police department and this achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.[411.66][411.66][applause]
All right. The next item is a proclamation, which I'll read. I'm sure I can see it. Whereas the struggle for dignity and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. And whereas President Bill Clinton on June 2, 2000, declared June as Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June 1969 Stonewall uprising in Lower Manhattan, and on June 1, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration further by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas June 28, 2019, marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, which broke out following a police raid on the Stonewall Inn targeting LGBTQ patrons and other marginalized people in violation of their civil rights, leading to the birth of the gay rights movement. And whereas LGBTQ Americans, including those who live in Walla Walla, face discrimination simply for being who they are and for who they love, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every person. And whereas the landmark Supreme Court decision of 2015 guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states was an historic victory for LGBTQ Americans and continues to affirm our belief that we are all freer when we are treated as equals. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Clark, Mayor of Walla Walla, do hereby proclaim June Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in Walla Walla, and encourage all community residents to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists and to celebrate our great diversity by taking part in community events throughout June, which focus on and celebrate our LGBTQ neighbors. And it's signed. And what I'd like to do, the way we do proclamations, is I'm not sure who... There are several people who I think that were coming. Taylor Wolf and Everett Maroon, are you the two who were going to officially accept this? All right, I'm going to come down. We're going to hand it to you, and it's not official until we get the official photograph taken.[578.88][578.88][laughter]
Thank you. Taylor is ill this evening, so she can't be here tonight, but I know she sends her thanks out to everyone. This is very moving. My sincere thank you goes out to the Walla Walla City Council members for this proclamation today. I thank you for supporting members of our community who are LGBTQ and who contribute much of their labor, expertise, kindness, and experience in order to improve the lives of all of us here in the city. On the one hand, the riot at the Stonewall Inn seems like a long time ago. And on the other hand, members of the LGBTQ community continue to face disproportionate violence and discrimination. Today is the third anniversary of the shooting at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, which 49 LGBTQ people, most of them Latino, were killed. It also is the same month, June, as the arson at the Upstairs Lounge in New Orleans in 1973 that took the lives of 32 people, and that had, until Pulse, marked the worst act of mass violence against the queer and trans community in the... Any pride proclamation must necessarily remember and respect the lives lost simply because another person deemed us not worthy of life. Upon this history, LGBTQ people around the country and the world engage pride events to show our resilience, our humanity, our culture, and our impact as participants in our communities. LGBTQ individuals in Walla Walla are entrepreneurs, medical providers, counselors, bakers, teachers, nonprofit executives, parents, authors, bankers, confidants, farmers, civic leaders, students. We are represented throughout Walla Walla, and we are as diverse as the community itself. Pride isn't about asking for exceptionalism for people who identify along the LGBTQ spectrum. It's an opportunity to foster relationships among those of us on the margins and outward to our families, neighbors, friends, and coworkers. Pride is a statement, one that began simply with the chant, "We're here, we're queer, get used to it," and that grew into more of a demonstrated moment of our connection to each other and to place. Our work speaks for itself. Our families represent our local roots. Our rich history of volunteering and philanthropy anchors the betterment of Walla Walla as one of our dearly held... In 2014, I helped conduct the only survey of LGBTQ in Walla Walla that has ever occurred. Thankfully, that survey found few incidents of anti-LGBTQ sentiment or activity. But what came through dramatically in the results was a deep and abiding concern among respondents that Walla Walla didn't really want to see us or know us. People reported that they were afraid to hold hands in public, to tell their coworkers about their partner, to reveal to their doctor that they were LGBTQ. This proclamation today means more than you know. It means that Walla Walla respects and honors its LGBTQ community members, that we are in fact a community that bridges differences and supports our diversity in making our city a fairer and more just place to live. Thank you for your support and your kindness. To the young people in our midst who are LGBTQ, I say this evening, you are seen, you are loved, and you are celebrated. Your elders hope to chart a wide path for you, as we have had carved out for us. Our shared future among all of us here in Walla Walla is bright.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is something that we call public comments. And this is a time when members of the public are invited to speak on matters that are of concern to the city, relate to the city, that are not otherwise on the agenda. I'd also like to say, if there are folks who need to leave, you may do so. We would love to have you stay. It's a real pleasure to have all of the seats filled. If there are other things you need to do, please, we won't... We are accustomed to people leaving after their special part.[954.88][954.88][laughter]
He got lucky, it was a short...
Bye-bye.
Okay, apparently they weren't here for me. This time.
It's nice.
Pretty good yourself?
Cool. All right, well, we're here.
Now, back to a normal audience. This looks like council candidates in RL. The good stuff's coming, isn't it?
Are you ready?
Let's let the people who didn't have seats come and take them, and then you're very... To address us. Give us your name, and then you're on your way. And we request a maximum of three minutes, if you can hold it to that.
My name is Colleen Myrick, and I'm asking about the homeless camp. And if anyone knows the population or how that is progressing, it's very hot outside today, as we know. It's 90 degrees. I'm wondering if it's being used. It's quite far from infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
My name is Sharon Schiller. I hope I'm not too loud. My address is 1414 Topaz. And this is, I hope it's within three minutes, but I'll be really quick. But I wanted to talk about what's happened in our country, our country's soul regarding politics, really quick. Let me present a theory and a proposal for a practical solution. I attended a town hall meeting a few months ago to listen to Kathy McMorris Rogers, our U.S. Representative, in the People's House. I did not go as an adversary, but rather, there is something about her that gives me the warm and fuzzies like some celebrities and rock musicians do. There were quite a few of the younger set who were there, and she was asked, "What do you think of the Green New Deal?" She responded rather skillfully, "I haven't yet seen a specific proposal." But what the young people were trying to get at, I believe, is discussion on a philosophical level, rather than the details of a bill and whether she would vote up or down on that particular bill. Similarly, I think this is the case locally when we throw around buzzwords such as increasing affordable housing. As I recall, when this push came to the forefront two years ago, in 2016, we had a town... We had town hall meetings for the city council that would start their terms in January 2017. It was never truly debated on a philosophical level. And when the comprehensive plan was developed in 2018, and yes, it was a lot of work, we were told it was a done deal. And here is a high-level explanation. And we were given one page here, the public, as far as I know. And yes, I should've, could've, would've attended the meetings of the planning commission, but I would have been not much more than an observer because I am one member of the public. I don't doubt the quality of the work. Here's the municipal code only for the zoning part. But I feel that public input is shut down at the philosophical level, making for less of a feel of public participation in the direction that things are going locally. We should not neglect civil discourse and debate on a philosophical level. We ought to not feel shut down with a firewall put up between the public and government officials. Thank you.
Thank you for your observations. Anyone else have an item regarding the city that's not on the agenda? Thank you. Ms. Myrick will come back to your question under new. All right, then, the next item is the consent agenda. And Ms. Hill, if you would read those items for folks who aren't here and aren't looking at them.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the public, members of the council. Tonight's consent agenda consists of items A through K. Item A is Resolution 2019-66, which authorizes the purchase of a new all-terrain utility task vehicle for the water intake facility in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Item B is Resolution 2019-67, which awards a bid to Corin Maine for the replacement of a water main tapping machine in the amount of $63,017.41. Item C is Resolution 2019-68, which authorizes a surplus of items no longer needed by the city. Item D is Resolution 2019-64, which rejects all bids for the Spokane Street Bridge project. Item E is Resolution 2019-69, which authorizes the purchase of a new mobile vehicle equipment lift system for the Fleet Services Mechanics in an amount not to exceed $43,000. Item F is Resolution 2019-70, which awards a contract to Ironside Custom Grinding for green waste grinding services at the landfill in an amount approximated at $103,041.18 over the three years of the contract. Item G is Resolution 2019-71, which authorizes a construction contract with Apollo for the installation of a Leachate system cleanout in the amount not to exceed $39,787.20. Item H is acceptance of the resignation of Jason Selwitz from the Sustainability Committee. Item I is acceptance of the resignation of BJ Harris from the Sustainability Committee. Both of those are moving out of the area. Item J is approval of minutes of the work session held May 20, and K is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 22.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council? Mr. Skidner.
Your Honor, I'm not asking that they be removed, but a few questions of A and D. Starting with item A, the new all-terrain utility task vehicle. Please, Mr. Shaw, briefly tell us what that is used for, number one. And number two, I'm assuming it's replacing an existing vehicle, and how long...
Thank you, sir. Yes, it is replacing a 2008 Polaris RZR all-terrain utility task vehicle. This is going to be located with our watershed attendant up on Mill Creek Road. And the reason for that, our watershed, it does not allow access to the general public. It requires a bit of security, as well as maintenance efforts, a lot. And we do not have nice paved roads up there. We don't even have nice potholed roads up there. These are basically train paths, or I should say pathways and trails, basically. That's what requires this type of vehicle for our personnel to be able to do the job adequately, keep people out, and protect our watershed and the quality of our water.
Thank you, ma'am.
With respect to item D...
Could I just wait one moment? Did anybody else have any questions regarding this item A? Yes, please, continue.
Item D, to reject a bid for the Spokane Street Bridge. Briefly, please tell us why, and what the rebid, and what does the construction will be undertaken?
Unfortunately, as Council is aware, we were subject to a minority business or disav... ...review by state and federal government. This review, associated with a couple other issues with the federal process, has now resulted in a delay of the award of bid. Additionally, the bid came in roughly about $250,000, $300,000 over the engineer's estimate. We... Since it's a bridge, we have a very restrictive in-water work period. We do not... We know that if we were to award the bid today, that we would miss that window of opportunity to complete the project this year, which would mean that the project would stay open and be disruptive to business and our citizens throughout the winter and until next year. So taking that into consideration, the Public Works Director, and I concur with his recommendation, reject the bid. We will rebid then this fall. And frankly, by going to bid in late fall, early winter, you typically results in better bid prices. So we anticipate we're going to get a better bid price. We'll have the contractor onboard at the very beginning of next year's construction season and complete the project in one construction year.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Anybody in the audience? Mr. McFarland.
Good evening. RL McFarland, 3731 Mill Creek Road. I was of that generation where a lot of families lived up Mill Creek for the entire summer, and the husbands commuted to town. We lived up very near the intake. And so I'm very familiar with that area. I believe a couple of years ago, there was a very faithful mule or donkey that was retired out to a good family. And I have a feeling this job may be related to some of the tasks that the new all-wheel driver, whatever, anyway. I'm recommending that in honor of that mule or donkey, that I probably hopefully is still around someplace, because I remember when it was transferred. But you named the new vehicle after that sweet animal, because that's basically a new version of what that faithful animal was all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Then I'd like to add a question from this end. Does someone remember the name of that mule? Mr. Beal?
I'm sure I put it in the resolution.
I believe it was Curly Sue. Curly Sue.
Curly Sue. All right. Thank you. Mr. Cummins, you have a question?
Your Honor, I would move for adoption of consent agenda items A through K. Second. With Curly Sue being part of it.
Second, Mr. Huey, I think. Mr. Moss, sorry. All right.
So, Your Honor, I appreciate the motion, and will support it. I just want to make sure that we pass this, this new all-terrain vehicle that's going to be named Curly Sue. Is that correct? Is that the intent of the motion? And I mean, I'm in favor of that, but let's just be really clear here. Is that...
Informally, it will be named Curly Sue.
Has the hashtag, so we can put it on the city website. The hashtag, making it clear.
That was a good animal.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. And just for anybody who's new here, that was 11 items that were handled with one vote. That's what the consent is about. The items on the consent agenda are typically matters that have been previously discussed by the council. They're matters that have been in the budget for some time, and also include routine matters such as accepting resignations. So this prevents our having to go through each of those items individually with a report from the staff. All right, let's move now to the active agenda.
So, Your Honor, I appreciate the motion and will support it. I just want to make sure that we pass this, this new all-terrain vehicle that's going to be named Curly Sue. Is that correct? Is that the intent of the motion? And I mean, I'm in favor of that, but let's just be really clear here. Is that...
Informally, it will be named Curly Sue.
Has the hashtag, so we can put it on the city website. The hashtag, making it clear.
That was a good, that was a good animal.
All right. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And just for anybody who's new here, that was 11 items that were handled with one vote. That's what the consent is about. The items on the consent agenda are typically matters that have been previously discussed by the council. They're matters that have been in the budget for some time and also include routine matters such as accepting resignations. So this prevents our having to go through each of those items individually with a report from the staff. All right, let's move now to the active agenda. And the first item is a resolution which would approve surplusing of police department guns. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe counsel as well is very familiar with this subject. We brought before council on January 23rd, 2019, with for surplus items. At that meeting, the council tabled action on nine shotguns and two other handguns pending further discussion, a future council workshop. It was again discussed on March 11th, 2009. And once again, council was, did not issue a directive to staff on the manner in which you would like to see these guns disposed. And so without a clear surplus policy, this question remains in front of the council, and we're just looking on how to deal with these surplus guns. Chief Bieber is here tonight. Chief Bieber, is there anything you'd like to add to that or respond to questions perhaps in a few minutes?
All right. Let's start out by asking if there are any questions, clarifying questions from council before we have any arguments. Mr. Scrivener?
Two questions. Number one, and Chief Bieber, do we not currently have a de facto policy to destroy guns that are taken as part of an arrest or from involved in a crime or per court order like domestic violence? If they're not reclaimed, de facto, destroy those guns?
Yes.
All right. Second question, with respect to the proposal before us that will surplus and sell guns that have been used by the police department. Why do we recognize two different categories of guns? If we're going to sell guns, why don't we sell all guns? Or if we're going to destroy some guns, why don't we destroy all guns?
Good question. I hope I have a good answer for you. I think it's a good answer. The guns that we purchase ourselves for the police department are in our possession from the time that we buy them from the manufacturer to the time that we dispose of them. We know what those guns have been used for. Guns that we bring into property and evidence, we have no idea what the history of those guns are. Public relations-wise, at a minimum, if we were to trade those guns in from property and evidence, and one of those guns ended up in the commission of a deadly crime per se, it really wouldn't matter that they went through a federally licensed firearm dealer. All that would come back on us is that Wallowalla Police had those in their property and evidence and let them go. My feeling is, or one of them gets out and it's found to have been used in a violent crime before, before it came into our evidence, property and evidence. My feeling is, I don't know the history of those guns. I don't know where they've been and what they've done, and I would rather just destroy them than put them back out in the market.
Can I follow up on that?
Oh, yes.
Chief, is it not also true that the guns that the police have had that were bought new, you also know how they've been treated, how they've been, they've not been modified, they've not been handled improperly? And you know that the condition of those guns compared to guns that you've taken off the street? Is that not also true?
That is correct. We have armors on staff and we work, we take care of those guns every year.
Condition them.
Yeah, we condition them every year.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of our discussions, Chief, was requested that you approach the Wallowalla Gun Club to see if those guns could be of use for training.
Yes.
I believe you've done so. Could you explain?
We did, we did have discussions with the Wallowalla Gun Club to see if they could use any of these guns or all of these guns for any of their programs, training, youth programs, whatever they, what are the, the programs that they have. They came and looked at the guns and decided that they would not be of use for their programs. So...
Thank you.
Other questions? So, so those rifles then would be part of the, of what would be surplus?
Yes, the shotguns would be.
And the dealer? Mr. Cummins?
If they were to be surplus, can you explain to us how they're surplus to authorized dealer and what an authorized dealer is?
Well, what we do is we trade them into a federally licensed firearm dealer. In this case, we have a relationship with one in the Gresham, Oregon area. That dealer gives us credit for those weapons. In this case, we have an estimate of roughly, well, $1,550 that we would get a credit for, which we would turn around and use to purchase a new urban rifle for our staff. The federally licensed firearm dealer has to go through those weapons, make sure that they, you know, meet specifications to be resold. And then, when they are resold, whoever they sell them to has to meet the background checks that they have to go through in that state and for the federal government.
Thank you.
Other council questions?
One follow-up question, if I may. The other guns that I asked to distinguish from the police use guns, if they were to be sold, would be through the same process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you, Chief Bieber. Anyone in the audience want to address the council before we, then we'll bring it back to the council for a discussion regarding options and how we'd like to deal with this. All right, we'll come back to the council for discussion. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Scrivener?
Your Honor, I know that the draft is before us to take action on the proposed language is to sell the guns. I am opposed to that. I think the gun should be destroyed. And so if the council will give me a few moments, let me run through what I've thought about in support of my position. I think in the first instance, I want to set this discussion in a broader context. And that is, I want to remind council, if you recall, I think it was last year, shortly after the gun shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas School in Florida, we had a group of, I think it was three young women from Wahaie, came to the council meeting and asked the council what, if anything, we could do as a council to address the issue of gun violence. And if you recall at that time, we, as a council, fell all over ourselves to show that we were supportive of their concern about gun violence. And we asked, through the city attorney, could we as a council prohibit the sale of certain types of guns? We talked about, could we have a strenuous background check or a longer waiting period, et cetera? Mr. Donaldson, the city attorney, researched those issues. And if you recall, replied back to us that basically the city of Wallowalla has virtually no latitude in that area to pass an ordinance restricting the sale of certain guns, et cetera, because as I understand, and Mr. Donaldson can jump in if I'm remembering this incorrectly, but basically that issue, that issue being gun control, et cetera, is preempted by state law. And so when we got that report back from Mr. Donaldson, we said, okay, gee, that's too bad. And we let the issue go. We have done nothing further until, and now I think this issue has given us an opportunity. And that's the context, I think, that we should be addressing the sale or destruction of guns, as how do we address a very valid concern from those students and other citizens who have addressed us about gun violence? So in that context, I think, point number one I want to make, that it would be the height of hypocrisy for this council to sell these guns. And I say that because, for those of you who are here and don't know it, her honor announced at the outset, we're in the newly renovated council chambers. And we are sitting, the seven of us, behind a brand-new dais. And whether or not you know it, ladies and gentlemen, this dais is bulletproof. It cost the city $26,000 to have a bulletproof dais because a prior council thought, there are crazies out there with guns, and we as a council want to protect ourselves from possible gun violence. And so to do that, when we redesigned this room, we want, and now we have, a bulletproof dais. Why? Because the prior council was concerned about the possibility of gun violence. And so to those Wahaie students and others concerned about gun violence, what is our response? It could be, we agree with you, we ourselves are concerned about it, we've got our protection, we're not going to contribute to the increased number of guns, we're not going to become a gun dealer, we're going to just destroy all guns the way we do a certain category of guns already. I think if we voted to sell the guns in light of what we're sitting behind and what those Wahaie students asked of us, we would be legitimately accused of being hypocrites. That's my argument number one. Number two, and that's why I asked the question of Chief Bieber, I am not persuaded by a distinction between what I've, in talking to other council members prior to this evening, between good guns and bad guns. Good guns are those that have been used by the police, I guess taught to respect the law and not speed and not sass their elders. And bad guns have been used by people who have to turn them in because of a court order or they're criminals. Bad guns, we can destroy. Good guns, they're okay to sell. Guns are not sentient beings. They don't have conscience. They're just an inanimate piece of metal. And to distinguish between good and bad and destroy some and sell others, I think is a laughable distinction, and I'm not persuaded by that, and I hope the council isn't. I think that we embrace in total the de facto policy that we already have. Point number three, with respect to what we could sell the guns for $1,550, and we've talked about that some already, and I know some council members have raised the issue about, well, you know, we could get the money. Please, as a council, I don't think that we should elevate money over principle. If we're concerned about gun violence, which obviously we are, and if we want to protect the citizens to the degree that we can of Wallowalla from gun violence, we don't do that by elevating $1,500 over the principle, both substantive, limiting the number of guns that are in the public arsenal, and symbolic, taking a stand not to make more guns available. So I think if we are, as a council, those who vote, because I would be against it, were to vote in favor of the language as drafted, I think we could be legitimately accused and found to be hypocrites in light of what we're sitting behind. I think that we would be making a silly distinction between good guns and bad guns, and I think we would be elevating money over principle. So I'm opposed to selling these guns. I don't think the city should be a gun dealer, and guns, when they're surplus, be they used by the police or however they're obtained, should be destroyed. So I'm encouraging my council colleagues to vote no on this, and I'm prepared to make another motion to destroy the guns if this particular motion does not carry. That's my position, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Scrivener? Anybody else? I'd like to comment, but I'd like others to go first if they'd like to. Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Scrivener, I appreciate your arguments. As we've worked through this, it occurs to me that we are a gun society, and safety, I think, is paramount issue. And that's why I particularly requested that the chief reach out to the gun club to see if those guns could be used for safety training purposes. And that being, not being the case, I do believe that it is appropriate to sell those guns. We have two ways in my mind of trying to change policy, that's both at the Washington State Legislature, to impact gun policy not only across, in Wallowalla, but across the state. And I think that's something that we should consider. And we also have an obligation, if we feel strongly about curbing gun violence, which I do, that we could work with our U.S. Congress. I don't believe that the fact that we would destroy these usable guns would even be seen as a drop in the sea of guns that pervade our country. I am interested in trying to codify the de facto policy that guns that are confiscated, that that be taken from a policy and moved into an ordinance. So I, the, there was a terrorist situation in New York City this last week, a young person that I believe was caught before they were able to carry out any violent act. And they were found to have two guns that had their serial numbers erased. And so I know that there's a market for those kinds of guns. I'm convinced that our selling those guns to a certified dealer would at least keep those guns out of the wrong hands. So I'm prepared to vote for the motion.
Mr. Huey?
I am in complete agreement that guns that are brought in as a result of some sort of a criminal type of activity be in fact confiscated and destroyed, only because, one, we don't know their history; two, we don't know how they've been modified; and three, we don't know if they in fact could do more damage than a police gun that is being legally used by our police officers. So destroying those guns has some significant merit. The problem is, is the guns that they're trying to surplus for the police department now are older guns. And the reason that they're not being used anymore is because they no longer meet the tactical needs of the police department. Most of them are underpowered, et cetera. What is the main purpose in anybody wanting to buy one of those guns? They're collectibles. Collectibles probably aren't going to see anything other than being hung on a wall. So I don't see that the kind of damage that could be done with these guns has any significance. Even a bigger issue than that is, if we do this with guns and say the surplus guns must be destroyed because we want to make sure that nobody gets hurt because of an action we did by the vote that we did, what are we going to do with other surplus equipment in the city of Wallowalla where somebody could get hurt by it? Now, I've used this example before, but I think it bears repetition. The city of Wallowalla Police Department employs vehicles that are higher powered than most normal vehicles out there. So when we surplus those police vehicles, they're high-powered. We already know that a lot of accidents result in death because of a vehicle in accident. I, for one, when I was fresh out of college, got a high-powered car, and I was told more than once that I'm going to be found inside of it one of these days wrapped around a telephone pole because I didn't know how to handle power. But the issue is, is that if we sell a police vehicle, pursuit vehicle, as surplus, we potentially are doing the same kind of thing. We're presenting to the public the possibility that somebody could get hurt or killed. So where do we draw the line on what we do with surplus equipment? I, for one, think it's not a bad issue to be able to sell those guns, because I believe in most cases, those guns are going to be bought up by collectors, not gun lunatics.
Mr. Cummins?
I am going to agree with Mr. Moss and Mr. Huey. I believe that weapons that have been in the possession of our police department, the value of those can be traded into licensed dealers, and that money can be credited towards replacement of, for weapons that we can put back in service with our police department. It's a cost savings for our police department, cost savings for our taxpayers, and I think it's beneficial to our citizens when we save them money and it goes back into... it's beneficial to our citizens when we save them money, and it goes back into, is handled through a reputable licensed dealership. I do not think that, going through a licensed vendor, I think is the proper way of doing it. I do not think the guns that are collected off the street from people who have used them for criminal activity, those guns should be destroyed, absolutely should be destroyed. You know, I've often wondered what would happen if we ever started collecting guns, and I think we all know that if we started collecting guns from people, from citizens, we would collect guns from people who are honest, and we probably would never collect guns from people who are dishonest. And that's what's the scary thing about this whole thing, is we would end up with people who are dishonest, would keep the guns, and that's the problem with this whole process. But I don't think I'm a hypocrite, but I think that for the benefit of a taxpayer, we could and should use the money, the feasibility of trading them in is the best thing for our citizens, and I think that they will be disposed of properly. So I will be in favor of trading them in.
Anybody else want to talk before I do, or you want to wait and hear another perspective? Mr. Club?
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me go on the record by saying, I would be very happy if this dais would go back to, like, down here, so I could feel like I could see people, that might limit its bulletproof quality. I wasn't here for the first meeting where we discussed this issue, and I've thought about it a lot, I've thought about guns a lot, since we did have people coming to city council to discuss it, and I discussed it with them personally, and, you know, my thinking has nothing to do with money or good versus bad guns. I don't believe it's fair to say I'm a hypocrite either. I told them at the time, and I will say now, that for me to support anything, it would have to be both legal and effective. And if I didn't think it was accomplishing the goal that I thought it was designed to accomplish, then it's ineffective, and that just wouldn't work. I'm not convinced that destroying these guns would do very much at all as far as reducing the probability or possibility of gun violence or mass gun violence in our community. I think we would be shamefully naive to say that that could never happen here, but it does feel like there's not a whole lot of options that are both legal and effective. And let me also say that I don't think it's merely an issue of just simply taking the guns away. We do have lots of guns in our culture in this country, but, you know, that's, it's kind of like throwing gasoline on the fire, I believe. That fire is still there. I think we have some deep, I don't know, I don't have the solution, I'll just say that, but I will say I don't think this is part of it. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Mr. Club? Okay, all right. The difficult part of being the mayor is at a time like this when people commit themselves, and you don't, you have to wait till the end, and they've already kind of publicly stated their position. Anyway, I think that most of us here are genuinely distressed by the murders, the accidental shootings, the mass shootings, and the suicides that are done with guns in our country. And the question is whether there is anything that we as a council can do about that. We know that the state has preempted the making of any kind of legislation that limits gun ownership or the use of guns. That's all in the state's purview. But this question that's before us now, I believe, gives us the opportunity to take an action that, yes, can indeed make a difference without in any way limiting gun ownership or use for the people who are living here. In no way does the, would the destruction of these guns limit, we wouldn't take the guns away from anybody, and it wouldn't limit their use of their guns in any way. And so I want to encourage the council to think about this a little bit more, including those who have already committed themselves. The first, the first thing I think that's useful is to look at what we know about gun violence, and when I say we, I mean we all, people who have looked into or studied this. The first thing we know is that more guns means more gun deaths. The correlation between guns per capita and gun deaths is very clear, and it holds between countries, across, you know, countries, the western industrialized countries, and it holds across states. There are, have been studies and reviews of how many guns there are per capita in the western industrialized countries, and how many gun deaths per whatever number of people occur in those countries. And the more guns per capita, the more gun deaths. The U.S., for whatever it's worth, is number one in gun deaths among all the western industrialized countries. In other words, the country's kind of comparable to us in many ways, with the same cultures. And the reason is that we have a whole lot more guns per capita than people in other countries. It's also true, within the United States, the states that have more guns per capita have more gun deaths per capita. So there seems to be a very strong correlation between number of guns around and the number of gun deaths. We know that in the United States, there's a mass shooting, and a mass shooting is one where there are three or more people who are shot, don't necessarily die, but who are shot. There are about, there's about one mass shooting every day in the United States. We hear about the more dramatic ones, we don't hear about the ones so much where it's somebody who goes and shoots four members of the family or something else. We hear more about the more dramatic and public ones. We also know that those mass shootings are a relatively small part of the total gun deaths in the country. So the mass shootings that garner so much interest are not the source of most of the gun deaths in the country. We also know that the U.S. does not have a higher crime rate than those western industrialized, other western industrialized countries, nor do we have a higher rate of mental illness than those countries. The critical factor seems to be we have more guns than those countries that have fewer gun deaths. So we also know that the type of gun doesn't matter, whether it's a rifle, a shotgun, a handgun, a semi-automatic, or a non-automatic weapon, they're all used to kill people, and they're all used in what we call mass murders, and they're all used by individuals to kill people. We've gone, the last, I won't go through this again, but just looking at the ones that made headlines on Google News, there are, there are all kinds of guns are used, including rifles, to kill people. We also know that what dealer we sell to doesn't make any difference. Most guns that are used in gun violence were legally acquired from a licensed dealer initially. Selling to a dealer doesn't mean that the gun's not, that it's not going to go to a second generation or a third generation person, and sometimes it's the first generation person. We, you'll often hear that so-and-so, the person in Virginia Beach had acquired his gun legally, directly, he was the first owner, but these guns move around, so that selling it to a licensed dealer or selling certain kinds of guns is not going to make really much difference. So what can we do? I think that we should really seriously consider not adding more guns to the total number that are out there waiting for somebody to grab one and harm somebody. I realize that we're talking about a really small amount of guns right now from the city of Walla Walla. We're talking about seven guns? Nine? Yeah, nine guns. But what we're talking about, and this is where I'm hoping that we may be able to gain some agreement here, we're talking about leadership. We're talking about somebody saying, if we want to go 1,000 miles, we've got to take a first step, and I'm going to take the first step, and I hope that others will follow me. There are 212 cities in Washington State. If Walla Walla does this, and others do it, we will have more than nine guns that are not going to be creating the condition for more gun deaths. This is practical. Somebody's got to go first. The next city is not going to have to say, well, we've only got this many guns. They're going to say, well, Walla Walla did it, and if you add ours to theirs, we have more guns that are going to be removed from the pool of guns that are available for somebody to pick up and harm somebody with. There are, yeah, 212 cities in Washington State, there are 20,000 incorporated municipal governments in the United States. We can be first in Walla Walla. We have been first in some things, we've been first in things, and people have come across the state to find out how we're doing things. I'm thinking right now of our sleep center, which is something that people have come from other cities in Washington State to find out how it's done because we're doing it right. I would love for us to take pride in being the first city to say, we're not going to put more guns into the pool which already has more guns than we need. There are plenty of guns there already to harm people, and they're being used to harm people. Let's not contribute to that. We don't have to. We can be the ones who say, it stops here. We're going to do something. We're not, we're not taking guns from anybody, we're not interfering with anyone's right to have a gun, we're simply saying, we're not going to contribute to the conditions that are causing this kind, that are causing the United States to be number one in gun deaths. So I ask you to consider, I believe that you're right, nine guns is, but it's a start, and if somebody doesn't start, it's not going to happen. Let's make it happen. Let's do something. My goodness, we've, we have had, we recently had one of our own killed, a good guy with a gun was killed by a bad guy with a gun in Wenatchee. Someone from our family, a cop that we, we know the family, is one of ours. Let's not, let's not, let's not act as if there's nothing we can do. Let's make something happen that would be good for everybody. That's my request, and I guess we can have, we could have answers to that, and we can also vote, and you'll have to vote your conscience. Any other comments? Okay, well, in that case, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Hill, do you want to tell us what the motion is?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion. There's a motion from... No, there isn't, no, there isn't. A motion from two months ago.
Well, no, that's not...
I made a motion that was tabled two months ago. I made a motion two months ago that was tabled to surplus the guns. Did I not?
That motion hasn't been taken off.
Can I take the, my motion off the table?
Well, except that we have, we have someone ready to make a motion. All right, our parliamentarian has to tell us. Do you have to take a motion off the table before a new one comes on?
You should actually, yeah, take my motion off the table.
All right.
So the motion to take the prior motion off the table.
May I take my prior motion off the table?
You may do that. And do you need a second for that?
That was seconded previously by Mr. Moss.
But do you need a second to take it off the table? The motion was seconded, but...
Mr. Moss is indicating that? Yes.
All right. Okay. So then we don't vote on whether to take it off the table?
No, you would vote whether to take it off the table. So you would, the motion was tabled, and so now you have a motion and a second to take, you know, to take Mr. Cummins's original motion off the table, so you would vote on that first.
All right. And that motion, I mean, we have a, the question is whether we take it off the table, and what it is, is the motion to...
The motion that I made was to ser, to authorize the city manager to surplus the guns to a, to an authorized dealer. Basically, it's the same motion that's in front of us on resolution 201972, and I think I listed it by, by weapon. I think I listed it off. Authorizing the city manager to dispose of the guns to a licensed dealer.
That motion is essentially memorialized in this...
Yes.
All right. So are we now voting to take it off the table or voting to approve it?
Just to take it off the table.
All right. All in favor of taking that motion off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, then it's off the table, and now we have that motion. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All right, the motion to...
To approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution.
That surpluses the guns.
The surplus, the guns by selling them.
I'm so confused.
I know.
The motion is, the not, the motion that we'll be voting on is similar to the motion that's in front of you this evening, is to surplus, to authorize the city manager to surplus the guns, the weapons that are listed in the resolution in front of you, to authorize him to surplus it to a legal, legal licensed dealer.
Okay. All right. Are we clear on what we're voting yes or no about?
Yes, we're voting what's on the paper right now.
Yes, exactly.
All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that motion passes, five to two, and let's hope that sometime in the future we'll have, we'll actually do something that makes a difference.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Moss?
If it's appropriate, I would like to move that we, in fact, codify the de facto policy, I don't know if it was instituted by Chief Bieber or Chief Fulton, but I do believe it is a valid policy, and I would like to see it codified by ordinance, and I would motion that we request... And I would motion that we request staff to bring forward a draft ordinance for our review in the coming weeks.
All right.
To destroy confiscated guns, yes.
Second.
So what we're doing is asking staff to bring forward an ordinance. Okay. Any discussion about that?
I think, gun is a gun, and obviously, the majority of council thinks being a gun dealer is fine. Money is important to pay for our bulletproof dyes, so I don't think we should destroy any guns. If some guns are good enough to sell, let's sell them all. We need the money. And yes, I'm being sarcastic, but that's the vote that the council made this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Two opposed? Okay, but then we will have on another council agenda this proposed ordinance. Thank you. All right, that's that one. Let's move to the next active item, which is adopting the Title VI Implementation Plan. Mr. Shawah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, Deputy...
Mayors, members of council, we don't have a presentation tonight. This was a matter that was discussed with council at the Monday workshop session, but Jennifer Beckmeyer and I are here to answer any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions from the council? We discussed, this is the nondiscrimination policy and the ADA policy, both.
The policy in front of you is the Title VI nondiscrimination policy. The ADA policy will be coming back to council once the work being that council authorized for the transportation side of the city gets completed, and then we'll bring that back as part of a resolution for council to adopt.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we could have a motion before we actually, so that we actually have this on the floor. Mr. Cummins.
Your Honor, I would move for adoption of resolution 2019-73, which adopts the Title VI Implementation Plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss. And are there any further questions by council? First, council question.
Your Honor, I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank, I would like to thank staff for bringing these policies up to current standards, and appreciate the fact that we want to be not only in compliance, but a leader with regard to how we deal with these laws and requirements. I know that it's been some time since they were looked at, so it's always nice to revisit and update, and thank staff for doing that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council or comments specifically? All right, members of the public, would you like to comment on the adoption of this Title Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion on the council? All right. The implementation plan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passed unanimously. The next active agenda item is a public hearing and a resolution to adopt the 2020 to 2025 comprehensive transportation plan. Mr. Shawah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, and some of the council members may not remember this, but we do this every year. Every year, we go through this exercise where you look at our proposed capital improvements for transportation and update our comprehensive transportation list. In fact, we do this almost, we do this twice a year, because when the city council adopts our capital improvement, that is then what goes into the comprehensive transportation plan. So this action tonight really, in essence, mirrors your action a few months ago, last winter, when you adopted our capital improvement plan, particularly the transportation section. So this is done, every year, we'll go through this exercise. The decision you'd make tonight, because sometimes councils wondered in the past, well, what if we missed a project or didn't add something in there? You have the ability to adopt, to re-adopt the transportation, comprehensive transportation plan at any point in the future. You can amend it. You're not restricted to doing it only once a year, but we must do it at least once a year. Our plan is then folded into the statewide transportation plan, and that's critically important for us, because in order to be eligible for various state and federal transport grants, we must be on that list. So while we do this every year, and it's somewhat of a redundant action, it is a critical action for our future transportation products to be considered for grant eligibility. Okay, with that, I'm going to stop. I'm going to turn it over to Doug Eaton, Public Works Engineering, and he'll handle on the comprehensive transportation plan.
Thank you, Mr. Shawah. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Doug Eaton. I'm one of the engineers in the Public Works Department. And like Mr. Shawah said, here we are again, like every year about this time, here to talk about the next six-year comprehensive transportation plan for 2020 through 2025. So every year, we are here because we need to adopt a new six-year plan. As part of that, we have to hold a public hearing. Our plan has two programs. One is the current six-year cycle, and we also have a long-range plan, which is just an accumulation of projects that we'd like to see go forward, but there's no designated time to get those done. As part of our six-year, we have five subprograms. They comprise of the arterial streets, signals, bike and ped, prid, bridge, and the transportation benefit district. This year, we would like to add five projects and remove eight. The added projects are Poplar Street from 14th Avenue to Myra Road, the citywide pedestrian safety treatments, which is made up of multiple projects that were on their own in previous plan years, and we've combined them to make one single project. Number three is the Melrose Street bicycle and pedestrian enhancements, which we would like to put on the long-range plan. It's just something that is identified as needed, but there is no current plan specifically. Along with that is the Ninth Avenue pedestrian crossings at Orchard Street. And the last one is the street lighting program, which was presented to council at a work session recently and was approved for implementation. This is a map showing these new projects. The orange circles are all a single project that we have grant funding for, and we'll be moving ahead in the next six months or so to get an RFP for a consultant onboard to help us with this design. The blue line is Melrose Street. It goes from the far east end to the west end. And then finally, the purple circle there is Orchard Street Crossing. The project that we'd like to remove is the Spokane Street Scape Improvements Plan, which I believe was just paved yesterday. The Titan Street, fourth to Modoc, which is currently under construction. The Poplar Street Signals Coordination, we would like to, each subsequent Poplar Street project will deal with whatever signal improvements are needed at that time. The Second Avenue at Morton Street Pedestrian Project and the Alder Bridge Pedestrian Improvements are the, two of the single projects that were combined to make one larger project. The Spokane Street Bridge Replacement at Mill Creek, it says nearing construction. Of course, it's been tabled until next year. And then the Isaacs Avenue Sidewalk Infill was on the long-range program. We completed that project in 2015, so it is no longer needed. And then finally, the bike lanes on Chestnut, which was also on the long-range project, and that was completed here a few years back. Our six-year CTP is consistent with the new City Walla Walla Comprehensive Plan Transportation Financially, there is no immediate impact for council to adopt a new six-year plan, though if we go after grants, most of them do require a local match to go along with receiving such grant. And that is what I have for you. Are there any questions?
Questions from street... Yes, Mr. Moss.
Thank you. I guess, why would we remove the Spokane Street Bridge Project since it's still ongoing? Hopefully, it will be completed within the next year, but until it is, why would it be taken off?
That is a great question. So we are required to keep a project that, in this case, has federal funding involved. Because we have received construction funding authorization from the state and the feds, it is no longer needed to be on our six-year plan.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. We get lots of transportation presentations, and it's very difficult for me to wrap my head around all of them. But I think at a high level, what a lot of people want to know is, is the city of Walla Walla increasing its commitment to streets, increasing funding to streets, and its prioritization of that, or decreasing, or the same? And I don't know, maybe this is a question for the city manager or you as well. How would you, does this plan reflect any sort of change as far as the commitment of resources to...
Our city resources, which we have increased very significantly over the last several years, remains at the high level. There is no immediate proposal that we're asking council to increase the fees or taxes more, for more money at this point in time. However, the dollar amount does vary year to year on what we're able to spend. And those are largely then determined, the variability from year to year is our success in obtaining these state and federal grants. So we do have a, if you look historically back from year to year, you will see million dollars in fluctuation from year to year, but there again, it just is dependent upon the amount of state and federal grant funding we received for that specific project. But we are not diminishing. We have increased greatly, but there is no proposal before council to further increase at this time.
So there's, so generally, not much change, although it's highly volatile, but the trend is the same. But what you're saying is you believe it's a high level of commitment.
That's correct. You know, in fact, roughly speaking, before we had a real working transportation program, which we have today, if I recollect correctly, and don't pin me to it, but we had, we're only dedicating about $175,000 to $200,000 a year about a decade ago. Today, and for the last few years, we consistently, through local resources only, are contributing roughly $6.5 million a year towards our infrastructure improvements. And these are programmatic, it's consistent, and then the variability is on top of that $6.5 million, depending on our success with the state and federal grants.
Right.
But it's been a very, very significant increase in funding to the transportation plan. We would love to have another few million dollars a year to accelerate the progress, but there is also just a limit to how the public can tolerate the fees and taxes. Understandable. But we're making progress.
I didn't realize it was so low just 10 years ago. That's...
If, you know, maybe council member, $200,000?
There were two budget lines. There was about $375,000.
Okay.
There was two budget lines. There was about $375,000.
Maybe we have this graph or something visually presentable already, but if there's some way to maybe the, you know, where the transportation benefit district, state funds, all of it just together, how money towards streets over the last however many years we have, that would be a great thing to see.
We could develop something like that. It would take a little bit of digging to look at all the various grants that we received over the last six to 10 years. But we can, it would be a lovely graph, starting very low and rocketing.
Okay. I seem to remember, maybe about a year ago, we voted on like, something like a report card for every single street in the city of Walla Walla. It was going to take, I think, four years to complete. Is this, am I correct? Does this ring in any bells?
You might be referring to in 200, it was 11 or 12.
This was last year.
Last year?
You and I went on the Jim Bach Show and talked about it.
Oh, the pavement management study. Okay, that's undergoing...
Okay. I was just curious about a sort of a status update. My understanding of that is we are going to get the condition, some sort of quantifiable status or condition of every single street in Walla...
That is correct.
Right, okay. The thing that's missing from all these plans, and it's not to point fingers, because funding is extremely challenging, but the thing that's missing in my mind is residential streets. I mean, it's great to see the arterials and high traffic. I understand those qualify for grants and outside funding, but, you know, we got to put the status of every single street on paper and then come up with a plan. Even if it's by 2080, we will fund this, we will fix this street, let's at least start there. And, you know, my brain anyway, if I can see the numbers, it's easier to know really where we're at, because I'm, every time, I'm like, will we see some neighborhood streets?
It's down the road, and as you noted, two critical factors that play into the selection of streets. Number one, obviously, is the condition of the street, and the daily traffic counts. So we're going to pay attention to the streets that are carrying 10,000 vehicles a day rather than 400, 500, 600 a day. That's a huge priority. And then the final point that you made is that unfortunately, there are no state or federal programs that provide grant funding for residential streets. Every street in every city in the United States, arterials, collectors, minor arterials, minor collectors, those are all grant eligible. When it's rated by state and federal government to be a residential street, you're on your own. And so 100%, of the funding then comes from local tax dollars. The more we spend on residential streets that carry less traffic, the less dollars we have available then to go after the larger arterial projects, and we lose the opportunity then perhaps for the state. So it's a tough predicament. We're working towards that way, and I look forward to the day when we've got all of our major arterials in good shape, and now we're able to really focus on residential. Or we go to the citizens and ask for an approval of a tax that would be perhaps dedicated then primarily to residential street work only. But that is one of the conundrums we're facing.
And one last question. So, but part of the prioritization is also citizen ranking survey? People get to vote on which streets?
Yes.
Get addressed? Is that going to hap, is there a new one in the works being planned?
Kai's not here, but I know in the next year or so, he wants to do that, because that list that we did, that's what I was referring to when I misunderstood your question. Where the citizens ranked, what streets do you want to see fixed first? Rose Street came out on, that was a 2011 or 12 survey, so we do want to update that now. Take these streets off that list that we have fixed and ask our citizens for their input again on how would they spend the money, what streets would they go to first?
Thank you.
Can I follow up on a question that you were talking with Mr. Clubb? We have approximately 126 lane miles of streets in Walla Walla, I think something like that. And you talked about the arterials, collector streets, residential streets, and so forth. It would be interesting to know what the...
Maybe the breakdown?
Breakdown.
Segmented between so many lane miles or lane near miles?
Or just the mileage of it. How many... How many, we, we spent a lot of time working on our arterials or our collectors.
We do.
And we don't spend any time on our residential because, because of mileage or the, because of the residential, we don't have that many miles put on, or the vehicle miles and so forthon. But what is our, what is the, the number of linear miles we have of residential? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I don't know.
That's something we might get sometime in the future for council.
Yeah. I think that's another good way of looking at it, so we understand that perhaps 65% of our streets in a linear mile is residential versus...
Right, linear miles.
Yeah.
I think it would be interesting to know, because...
I haven't seen, I've never seen that number or segmented, but we can certainly come up with that.
If it's not hard to find, it might be...
Mr. Scrubner?
First, with respect to this ranking of streets that you say was done some time ago, and some of those streets have been addressed. 213 TDB list of streets, ranking them, number one Rose, down to 25 Chase Avenue. Is that the list you're talking about?
Mr. Donaldson's pulling it up. It's easier to find it on paper than it is on the iPad. Page number again was two?
13, 213. The following TBD list was created from a combination of citizen survey, traffic volume, and transportation. The list was approved by state.
Is the top of the list, does it say Rose Street?
Number one was Rose Street, and that's, and there are columns, fully completed, partially completed, et cetera. Rose Street is fully completed. Number two is Isaacs, partially complete. Three is Alder, partially complete. Is that the list you were talking about?
That's it, and it's tied to TBD, because at that time, part of the public conversation we were having was informing the public on the options of forming a transportation benefit district. And as part of that exercise and public conversation, we asked the citizens to go ahead and rank the streets where they'd start paving if we had the dollars. So, yes, they are tied together.
So, the evaluation that you were talking about in response to a question from Clubb, I'm assuming we've hired a consultant or five to do this, but he, she, they are going to tell us all the streets, using some methodology, and at some point, we're gonna get this list? What are we gonna do with it?
Well, we're gonna take the citizens' input and do our best to try to address the needs. We'll fit it in with our, you know, technical ranking, a traffic volume, are there failing water lines or wastewater lines? That criteria comes into play as well, but we're very interested to see where do our citizens want us to spend the money? So that is a driving factor. I mean, the reason we started with Rose Street is, I remember council member Dominic Elias saying, "For God's sakes, just put a shovel in the ground and start fixing streets somewhere, because we have so many that are, you know, shot." Well, we started with Rose Street because that was the number one ranking of our citizens. And when they passed the TBD money, we wanted to show them that we were listening, and that's where we went after it. And if I remember, we added, that was a three-phase project. It was a big project. So, the issue too is, I don't want to give the impression that if you give us a 1 through 10, we're just gonna go down that list, 1, 2, 3, 10. That's not always the case, because the engineers are also, as I mentioned, looking at underground infrastructure that you and I don't see on a daily basis or under... Number two, they have insight into which projects are gonna be the most competitive for the state and federal grant dollars. So, we may jump down the list, four, five, eight, 10 projects, because we know that that 11, ranked number 11 project is gonna do really well in competition at the state and federal grant level. So, those are influencing factors on what streets are selected to go after.
And I appreciate that, and that's the point. We want to maximize our local dollars. Do that by getting, focusing on grant-eligible projects, to get state and federal dollars that can maximize our local dollars, correct?
Absolutely, and a case in point right now today is Isaacs Avenue Phase Two. Total project cost for Phase Two is roughly $10 million, of which our engineers have done an excellent job and raised 65% of that project with grant funding.
No dispute with that. For those residents who live on less than really busy streets, major arterials whose streets are falling apart, like Boyer Avenue that I drove down today, and when I last bought a mountain bike, they said, "Take a ride and go test it on a really rough road, ride down Boyer." So I did. That's not a major arterial, and so suck it up if you live on Boyer, because for the reasons you stated, and this isn't a criticism, it's just the reality, we gotta try to maximize our dollars, and so it's the major arterials, the IRRP eligible projects, they're gonna get the money, and the smaller streets, the less traveled streets, don't plan on it realistically maybe in our lifetime. That's the reality, correct?
I would hope in my lifetime, we're gonna see some of that done. I have hope, and I also want to state that it's not as though we don't pave any residential streets. We do some in-house paving, smaller projects with our streets crew, so we do tackle a small amount of residential work a year. But you're, you're right, the majority of the priority is leveraging the dollars and getting the most done that we can with our local tax dollars.
We can only hope that Domino's decides to give us some more money in the future.
If they would add some zeros onto their award, it would be helpful.
Any other questions by council? I think we haven't been out to the public yet. Am I correct? Oh, it is a public hearing in any event, all right. So, any other questions then, or clarifications from council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Eaton, and we'll just open the public hearing. If you'd like to comment on the proposed plan, this is your chance to do it.
RL McFarland, 3731 Middleweight Spurg Road. On the list, you were going to remove Spokane Street, beautification between Maine and Alder. And I'd liked, there's a catch 22, which I just posed this question to the county commissioners, with the unfortunate failing of the bid process. Tied into that is the beautification funding for Spokane Street between Maine and Alder that was done in two separate bids, 250 from the port and 125 from the county, and the 125 done in two payments. The first half is based on, will be paid by the county to the city when the permits are active for the Penrose Hotel. The second half of that 125 will be paid when the bridge is finished. It's complicated, and it's kinda crazy, and now that the bridge has been delayed for a year, the second half funding that you'll get when the bridge is finished is pushed way out to next year, but the first half of the funding, you're gonna get when the hotel permits are active for a, for a bridge project, street that won't begin till next year. They're two completely separate projects. So my question for you is, in order for you to get that initial one, half of the 125 for that item that you're gonna be removing, which I'm suggesting you may want to keep on your list, that's what I'm getting at, because are the permits active for the hotel or not? That's a completely fair question to ask, because they set the, the opening gate to get that, half of that 125. You're then going to get it, but you're not gonna be able to spend it, because the bridge project is until next year. Do you see what I'm getting at? There's a real disconnect there, and so this is a good time to ask, are the permits for the Penrose Hotel active or not? Because that starts the clock on that part of that funding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments or questions? As part of the hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And I wonder if, does anybody have information about the, the funding from the county or the...
Yes, Mr. McFarland's clearly been paying attention to this project. He's followed us to the port and, and the county, and he's correct, it does throw a little bit of a curveball. When the county commissioners appropriated their slice of funding for this, which if I recollect correctly, was a total of $125,000, they did tie it to the Penrose Hotel moving, and then the second half payment of the bridge being completed. The Penrose Hotel project is still moving forward. They had full plans submitted. Our understanding is though they are making some modifications to it, so they're going to resubmit. The last I've heard from Mr. Day on that project is they hope to start construction late summer or fall. I've informed him of the situation with the Spokane Street Bridge delay, doesn't cause them problems, since they're not already under construction. Were they under construction now, and we were delaying the project, and then when in next year, when they're finishing the hotel and we're starting the bridge, that would have been a real problem for their operations? But luckily, that's not the case before us. So, effectively, what we will do on this delay is I will just inform both the port and the county. We will not be seeking dollars from the county. Let's just say the Penrose breaks ground in October, we're not gonna go to the county now and send a bill and say, "Give us one half the amount that you pledged for this out of your economic development fund." We will wait until we break ground and start incurring those costs on the construction as we presented it to them.
So, so you anticipate that things will be able to be moved around a little bit and still go forth, just with different, different time?
Yes, in fact, I think financially, it makes it easier on them. It gives them another month's of economic development, sales, tax. So it shouldn't cause them a problem.
Great, thank you. All right, then we have a resolution. We've had our, our hearing. Do we have a motion to adopt that resolution, to adopt the comprehensive transportation Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move for adoption of 2020 through 2025 comprehensive plan as presented, Resolution 2019-74.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bayena. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, Mr. Cummins, we have a register, payment of...
Yes, I move for approval of the accounts payable register of all checks on the accounts payable register, excluding two, one for the Lions for the homeless and one for Walla Walla School District.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Two items remaining?
I would move for, to pay the last two remaining checks, one to Lions for the homeless and one to Walla.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Clubb got there first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Two, Clark and Bayena. All right, that passes. Thank you. We'll have council member meeting reports. Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 3rd of June, I attended the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting. We met at East Gate Lions Park, which was, was a beautiful evening, and I want to compliment park staff. The park is, I believe all the parks are in very, very nice condition, but certainly as we walked around East Gate Lions, it's the nicest I've seen it in many years. On the 4th of June, we held our council housing committee meeting. 5th of June, attended the candidates forum. 10th of June, the work session. Yesterday, I attended, along with a couple of other council members and city staff, the community council's presentation on affordable housing. They have spent 26 weeks looking at affordable housing issues and have a very thoughtful presentation of findings and conclusions and recommendations. It would be my hope that the city staff and possibly some of the council could continue as they now carry into an implementation process. That's the extent of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Huey?
On 5:30, I attended the Melkrick General Investigative Staff Board of Engineers. On the 5th, I attended the council candidates forum. On the 10th, I attended council workshop. And on the 11th, I had to at the last minute beg off being at the actual meeting, but I had been in discussions with a number of the people that were going to be attending that board meeting, and it turns out that we were awarded a grant from Sherwood Trust to fund a position for an operations manager for the next three years, and the only reason we, original operations manager. We had the wonderful opportunity to be able to hire a collections manager, but due to that meant we could not fund the operations manager. So by getting that grant, it was a plus that Fort Walla Walla needed to keep going forward. That's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Bayena?
On June 4th, I attended it, along with Mr. Moss and Mr. Clubb, at the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Meeting. On June 5th, we were part of the candidate forum, and then June 10th, at the work session. And it's the last day of school, so I am extremely excited.
Very nice. Mr. Cummins?
On May 22nd, we Valley Transit Manager Selection Committee Meeting. On the 23rd, the State Auditor Entrance Meeting. On the 24th, Valley Transit, first set of interviews for the general manager. On the 28th, Walla Walla Housing Authority Monthly Board Meeting. On June 1st, cemetery tour for the community on a Saturday. On June 5th, the candidate forum. On June 6th, the second round of Valley Transit general manager interviews. And I'd like to report this month that the, at the monthly Valley Transit meeting on the 20th, we should take action to hire a new general manager for the Valley Transit system. On the 7th, I met with Mr. Shawar to prepare, hopefully to prepare for legislative workshop, which will be forthcoming this Friday. Then on the 11th, I also attended the community council luncheon that Mr. Moss earlier reported on in the council reports. So that's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Clubb?
Thank you, Your Honor. On Friday, May 24th, I attended a meeting of Fort Walla Walla to learn more about their organization. On Wednesday, May 29th, I attended the Early Learning Coalition breakfast to discuss the possibility of expanding childcare and, I think, preschool services as well in Walla Walla. On Wednesday, May 29th, I attended, or it was a webinar from AWC, which we had on our legislative priorities, some affordable housing priorities. Specifically, we actually called out a bill last session, last year was HB 2407, and in this session, it was 1406, and that bill did pass. That allows counties to, and cities, to retain a portion of the otherwise state sales revenues, retain those locally for affordable housing projects, so no net tax increase. It's a very small amount, but we, we take what we get, and so, anyway, that'll hopefully, the county has first, I believe, pass, and then potentially we do, if they just, if they do decide for some reason to pass. But, so that'll be interesting to see what they, not sure what they're thinking about that. Continuing on, Tuesday, June 4th, the Affordable Housing Task Force met again about property. This is something that we are thinking very carefully and methodically, I think, about, and interested in collaborating with county, port, other cities potentially, so that's something that I think we will dedicate a lot of time to. Wednesday, June 5th, was at the council candidates workshop. Monday, June 10th, our council workshop. And Tuesday, June 11th, I was at the community council luncheon on the affordable housing study.
Busy time. Mr. Scrubner?
Number one, on Friday, May 24, as reported by Councilmember Cummins, participated in the Valley Transit. For two, on Thursday, May 30, went for a presentation on the plans for a... for Mill Creek. Number three, on Tuesday, June 4th, Walla Walla Watershed Partnership Board Meeting. Number four, on Wednesday, June 5th, Agenda Setting with Your Honor, with City Manager and Deputy City Manager. Number five, that same day, Wednesday, June 5th, with the rest of you, the candidate orientation. Number six, Thursday, June 6th, as reported, the Valley Transit General Manager Interviews, and as reported, announcement will be forthcoming. Number seven, on Monday, June 10th, the Work Session with all the other members. Number eight, yesterday, Tuesday, June 11th, the Bike, Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'll return to that in new business with-
Bye, laws.
And number nine, today, June 12th, the Library Board. That's my report.
Also busy. On May 30th, I, I was also at the Stakeholders Meeting for the, the Mill Creek General Investigative Study. And on, did I say June? It was May 30th. June 5th, I was at, at the Agenda Setting and also the Candidates Workshop. And on June 10th, that, the Work Session. All right, let's move to new and unfinished business from council first. Mr. Scrivener?
Your Honor, with respect to the Bike and Pedestrian, we have seven member, one position has been vacant for quite a period of time, so that's, there are six, but their bylaws require that four constitutes a, and historically, they've had lots of meetings without a quorum. The current makeup of the board is a little better, but they still find themselves often without a quorum. So an issue has been raised whether or not they may amend, change their bylaws to change the number of people in the quorum, and they discussed it at their meeting yesterday, and what they would like to do. And I sent an email a month or so ago after they first raised the issue about may we change to have a lesser, I sent an email to Mr. Donaldson and Ms. Hill, and they responded, appreciate that. And, and if you correct me if I'm wrong, but they may amend their bylaws with council approval, and what they would like to do. And so let me make this in the form of a motion, so we can discuss it and then take action on it. I would move that we allow the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to amend its bylaws to allow two members to be a quorum to approve minutes of prior meetings. In all other respects, their quorum will be required to be four. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, second from Mr. Moss. All right, do you want to expand on that, or is that sufficient?
And it's for that reason. They just would like to get their minutes. They often don't have a quorum for that, and we understand if this council says go for it, they will go for it, and that's what they'd like to do. They're not changing in any other way other than to approve their minutes of their last meeting. They want to, and for what it's worth, and Mr. Cummins can jump in here, the Valley Transit Board, or excuse me, bylaws say that other than, I think, for financial matters, a quorum is one member. So what is being proposed here is not out of the realm of what's done in other organizations. And it's for that limited purpose. So I'm asking the council to give consideration and vote in favor.
All right, any questions from council?
One question is strictly for the approval of the minutes we start to conduct business.
Correct. They're not going to take any action that requires a vote unless they have a quorum.
And it's just that having come all that way, they'd like to be able to do something. Let me just ask before we vote, does Ms. Hill or, or Mr. Donaldson have a concern with that from the point of view of proper parliamentary procedure? All right, you don't. All right, thank you.
Western civilization as we know it. Other than that, it should be all right.
Be good. All right. Okay, any other comments from council members? Let's vote. There's a motion to allow a quorum of two to approve minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Any other unfinished or new business? Mr. Club?
Thank you. I don't have a motion. I have some questions, possibly a comment related to the fireworks conversation on Monday. I left the workshop feeling as if there was something we had maybe decided, or instruct- some sort of instruction maybe. But it's unclear to me whether there is going to be an escalation of enforcement or not. I don't know. I'm just wondering, what is, is there a plan for an increased sort of enforcement? And what is that plan? And I'm, I'm worried, I think I heard people talking about seizing fireworks, which makes me very uncomfortable. And I don't, I don't know if that's part of the plan. Anyway, I have a lot of questions about what are we thinking as far as enforcement, increased, increased enforcement, 4th of July?
I don't know that we're going to have more, have in the past, but we are going to change it up by putting, embedding a police officer and fireman together. I mean, that's what both Chief Yancey and Chief Bieber are working on over the next week. They're already in communication on this. We are not going to go in with heavy-handed enforcement, but we talked about, you know, if they're in the right of ways and there are aerial devices, mortars in the sky, our intention is to go up and let them know that that is in violation. And, you know, we don't want to write the tickets. We don't, I don't, I can't say that they won't write a ticket because every situation, the, the police officer is going to have to decide whether it warrants it or not, and the level of cooperation and so forth. But the, the fact is, we have in a law on the books that clearly states, and we've raised, staff has raised issues. It's confusing, as we discussed, to our citizens. But, and we have provided, provided educational material, but we have an ordinance on the books. Some of our citizens have made it very clear, they're not satisfied with, you know, our, our performance. They want to see more aggressive performance or, or a bit stricter enforcement. Again, we're not going to go out and with the intention of writing all kinds of tickets, and as we discussed on Monday, going into people's backyards and going through the boxes. But if we get the reports on 911, we're going to go check it out. And if they're clearly on public property, or in the right of way, and we're clearly violating the law, we're going to ask them to turn over those fireworks that are in violation. That, that's our intention. And again, council can direct us otherwise or amend the ordinance, but, but that's where we're at, sir. I'm not sure what else to do.
There could be seizure of fireworks.
There, there could and probably will be the collection of illegal fire-
Okay. And that's not normal. That's a-
We've, no, we've, we've taken some fireworks in the past. I, I can't give you an exact amount, but it's, I'm not going to say it's the first time we've ever done this. Because again, I mean, when you get out there into the public on, with the holiday, we, we're going to encounter M80s, which are clearly illegal even under federal law. We're going to take those, of course. We've taken those in the past. If someone's got a big roll of firecrackers they're lighting off, we're going to definitely take those. If they're shooting illegal skyrockets that don't conform to state and federal, we've seized those in the past. We'll probably seize those again. They're illegally shooting them off in the-
Okay.
It's, it's, I wish I could give you a better answer, but as, as, as all of you saw, this is a difficult issue, and there's not an easy solution going forward. So we're going to step up enforcement, continue the education, and just do our best. We don't want to be, you know, spoil sports at all, but with the same time, this is a law of the city, and it's our duty to do our best to keep our public safe, follow the direction of the city council as they've adopted code.
Yeah, I know. I, I wouldn't obviously dispute that it is a law. We should enforce laws. It's, I, I guess the degree to which we are committing resources and attention and to, I mean, it's, unfortunately, laws are enforced unevenly, I suppose. And so we, it's, we seem to be talking about an escalation of enforcement, an escalation of commitment. And that makes me very uncomfortable. So anyway, that's just my comment. I just appreciate going on record. I really, we didn't really vote on this decision, but that makes me very uncomfortable. I, I, I would, I would sooner repeal our restrictions than encourage more enforcement, and certainly not taking people's fireworks. That's just my position on it.
Well, any, yes, any proposal to amend the ordinances, of course, is always possible. And if, if council members want to do that, they can always, you know, come forth with a proposal to amend the current rules. But it's just a, a question of enforcing what's, what's been in effect for 16 years, I guess, since 2003. And also, we discussed, and I think that there was pretty much agreement about including a question, you know, trying to get a sense of how folks in the city feel about the enforcement or lack of enforcement. Because clearly, there hasn't been much enforcement activity going on. So at least it seems clear to some of us that it doesn't look much like enforcement when you're out there seeing those, those mortars firing off. So, but anyway, I mean, it's, this is a question of enfor- of enforcing an existing-
I mean, the, the assumption, I'm sorry to interrupt. The assumption seems to be that we are, we've chosen not to enforce. And I'm not, that's not extremely clear to me. I, I don't know. It's, I don't know. Seems difficult. I, I can, I can see how if you observe someone shooting, and there's an aerial next to them, but I don't know. I'm not a police officer. I'm not a lawyer. It just seems like it could get pretty difficult to dissect who did what and what kind. And I don't think it's merely a matter of choosing not to enforce, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage that choice anyway, so.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business from council?
Quick question. Mrs. Hill, are we going to get a clock in here? And by the way, I used to have a calendar, a personal calendar up here. It's gone. Will we get it back, or is it worldwide calendar, worldwide? Thanks.
It's going to be touchscreen, right there in front of you, so just touch it.
Worldwide, worldwide travel, you used to have a calendar up here for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we, we had a question during the public comments. There was a question about the operation of the, the homeless camp during the summer. Mr. Shawar, do you-
I'm going to turn this over to Deputy City Manager, but he really is the program manager.
Mr. Olson?
Mayor and members of council, in response to the questions, and I was out at the Sleep Center today, doing some work. There are two buildings at the Sleep Center site that are, that have air conditioning and client use when they check in and that. So we have that place where they can cool down for that period of time. We have not seen or experienced in questioning of the Homeless Alliance staff that there have been any problems related to the heat, nor were there any problems last summer related to the heat. Water there, there's cool water. They have limited food that they can hand out if folks are hungry. So we think, at least for right now, it is working pretty well. I'm sure as we go forward, as, as this heat phase really starts to sink in, we may discover that there are some shortcomings. But I talk with those folks every day, so we're not aware of anything, and nor has anything been reported.
Mr. Cummins?
I'd like to have a follow-up question if I could. I've asked previously, and I'll ask again once we're talking about the subject. What is the liability of, of having, some of the people have dogs on the premises. I've asked about having the dogs licensed to prove that they have their shots and so forth because of the liability of, if a dog bites somebody. So are the dogs that are on the, that are owned by people on the homeless, they're staying there at the homeless shelter, are they licensed and so we can prove that they are, have their shots?
So, individuals are allowed up to a maximum of one pet, and the only allowable pet is a dog per hut. Once they check in, they are given approximately 10 days, and it depends on, do they come in at late one week? So time to go over to the Humane Society. The Humane Society will do all of the necessary shots to bring the dogs' animal records up to speed. And then if the individual does not get, excuse me, get the animal with the proper shots within that 10-day period, then they are excluded from the camp because they, they, they either have a choice of taking the dog somewhere else, or they and the dog need to leave.
So we require them to have the license?
Yes. And in addition, I checked with, with the Homeless Alliance staff, and in the, since May 22nd of 2017, there has only been one reported dog bite incident, and it was related to some issues where the actual owner was not at the camp, but the substitute owner was having a difficulty with-
But they are, we, we do require them to be licensed so we can prove that they have the inoculations of shots?
Thank you. That's, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all we have from up here? What about staff? Are there any new and unfinished, and/or unfinished business?
Three quick things, just reminders really. And one thing, you want to just recognize, Andy Coleman, as we walk down Main Street, you see those beautiful baskets, banners, the bark under the tree, the trees are healthy. Has to do to Andy. And I just say, I appreciate it every day, Andy. It's one of the most beautiful Main Streets in the nation. I want to remind council tomorrow at Willow Street, Fire Station 1, is the first neighborhood block party of the year. If you have the opportunity to join us, I'd encourage you. And then I just want to remind council, the special council meeting on Friday, right here at 4:00 PM, to discuss the 2019 legislative session and going forward. Thank you.
All right, then I'm going to announce that we're going to recess into an executive session to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, Section 1C, and to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation involving the city pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, Sec. 1. We will not be reconvening up here for any further business, and so we will adjourn. Let's see, we won't be longer than two hours, and we will adjourn from, from the executive session. Thank you. We're in recess.